We're continuing our meeting from last week in our work session. Both of the work sessionary meeting on Tuesday due to the Labor Day holiday. So we will start off with calendar and correspondence.
The executive session at one o'clock this afternoon. And then, um, this is moving forward to the 21st and this is just Commissioner Peach confirming that Labor Day transits. They, Commissioner McIntyre can't attend and we're making sure they have a forum.
Oh.
It's in West End.
Yeah, the call was a dedication on how to support. Just saying. So I was going to attend that briefly and then shoot.
That's good. Okay. Yeah. I'm going to candidate thing and schedule the P eight chamber.
He will be a candidate.
Yeah.
I don't know, have you worked out the 18th? Have you, Commissioner Chapman had enough to get together and figure out the Peninsula Regional?
Yeah, I'll be in, I'll be at the WAC Board of Directors and head it up.
Correct. There's actually two different plans and they gave you a copy of the two decisions that you've been commenting on.
I, I'll look at them, I haven't had a chance to yet, but if, if I need to do anything, I'll just make comments directly to our PRTPO staff. But, um, I think, I think the way we left it was Commissioner Chapman was going to call in for those action items because of your end. Yeah, and we're doing three different rotations there, the three of us.
The consortium board.
Right. I think that's the way we left it, Commissioner Chapman was going to call in, you know, the Public Works Office there in Mason County certainly has got a conference call in the building, so.
We're still working on that because apparently the person that had the knowledge of the conference call is not with them anymore, so they're not quite sure how to do the actual. We're still working on it, but we've got another week to figure it out.
Okay. That I believe is the way we left it last week. What's just going on here?
Nothing the rest of this week, Florida held next week, I will confirm K O and P unless, um, both of you are going to be at the Shipley Center or something.
Well, that's a, that's a one to four open house, kind of a drop in sort of thing, so.
Right.
I will be on another candidate until probably about 1:30, so I won't be able to join a K O and P show until about 1:30 or so. And then I'll vote from there and just run down to the Shipley Center, eat some cake or some coffee, whatever. And I'll just, I'll just might attend the K O and P. And it's not on the calendar, but I just thought I'd share that, um, the Washington State Supreme Court is holding their meeting in Forks on the 10th. There is a reception on the 9th at 4:30 at Peninsula College. And that'll be one hour conversation about what does the Supreme Court view and then one hour of just like a nervous network.
What time does that start?
4:30 on Wednesday, working to the public. And then on Thursday, that's probably at that meeting starts when it's all ready.
I think I may turn a little bit.
Appreciate it because we're trying as much as possible to send the messages back to the Supreme Court. We're sure it's never been done.
In the courts?
Yeah, they've been in county before, but I don't see.
What term?
You're going to do that at Peninsula College.
Do you have the room?
I know it's the main meeting area downstairs, Peninsula College, Peninsula College in Forks.
Is the reception?
Oh, in Peninsula College in Forks too? Yeah. And then they actually told their court and before we march there. And thank you in advance for letting me snip these speakers, microphone.
Okay.
Okay.
Help us remember that you're going this and.
We need to come up with a microphone for the judges.
That would be swell.
Trish has been helping us out. It's a lot. Okay. Put it on the calendar.
I believe so. On the 25th Larry Campbell wrote a letter to me which I've copied each of the one. Correspondence from James Robert Huntley regarding Tom Road. And, um, recent changes to the state law regarding community competency evaluations. And a letter from Mr. John Spade about the road department's trimming trees on his property without consent.
I think that was a way.
Yes, we were, yes.
And they, they received a copy. I've had some testimony on three crafts, have moved vacation three crafts.
Also, we had one on marijuana this morning as well.
Okay.
Forward to you.
Not seen that.
So we got two more this morning, one on food, one on marijuana. Send them to you saying they'd be included in this public meetings.
Get in there.
And we want to formally introduce my recusal letter this morning at this point, or do we want to?
You had it number four.
We had it as number four.
Okay. Okay, I'll just do that then. And we also probably need to mention, now's as good a time as any, prosecuting attorney has asked for executive session this afternoon.
One to three?
One to three. To discuss matters that are probably excluded from public disclosure under the Open Public Meeting Act, schedule that for this afternoon. If you could help me on that one, there's a meeting, an employment meeting that was supposed to be taken in Squam.
Okay.
Remember that one? It started at about nine o'clock this morning, but if you'd kind of be able to call and just let her know that I'm not going to be able to attend.
Okay. Is it on your calendar?
Yeah. You know, as long as we're talking about Open Public Meeting Act things this morning, the Department of Board received a phone call from a constituent asking her to make appointments with each of the commissioners individually, one after another, for, for him to speak about county business. And she was quite concerned, properly concerned, that would lead or could lead or would be a serial meeting came talk to me. And, you know, that's been a part of the law, the Open Public Meeting Act, that has always troubled me. What would be that, how do we, when we don't know that a constituent might have sent a majority of the board individually emails to meet with them and you set up said meetings and it turns out that, as is very common for one of you to get county business, that a majority of the board receives testimony that the public doesn't know about outside of a public meeting and I don't know how to stop that. But, as I told Trish this morning, I just wanted to let you know, I do know that it would be prudent for us staff not to help set up such a situation. So, you know, I did instruct her to say that she cannot make those kinds of appointments. That would be a violation of Open Public Meeting, just to remind folks of that. It's something, you know, we have to adhere to and we just, our only defense is, is we didn't know what happened. And if we set it up, we don't have that defense anymore. So I instructed her not to allow that to occur.
Well, we, the person Mark, see Mark Nichols prosecuting attorney is here and he starts falling out of his chair, although I've said something incorrect or wrong. But, um, I think my, my usual practice is, you know, we do get, we commissioners do get emails or communications from our constituents, sometimes in the form of an email, it's to all three of us simultaneously. I always make a point of not responding to those from, from my email thing and I always just kind of buck them over to you for a response from county government, but just so as to not set up the appearance of a serial meeting.
Yes.
The dilemma, that's not a dilemma, the practice that we, I think, or the delicate dance that we need to conduct is to be open to input from our constituents. But try to do that in such a way as we discourage our constituents from telling us individually what another commissioner told them or what they discussed with another commissioner. I certainly don't want to, and I don't think that the intent or the spirit of the Open Public Meetings Act is to truncate or limit our constituents' ability to convey whatever it is that they, they want to convey to us, either all three or in a public setting such as this, or all three individually at different times, maybe in different places, or just one of us and then have one of us or the two of us bring some, some issue that's on their mind to a, to a table such as now. So I'm totally fine with any constituent giving me a call or sending me an email asking that they, they meet with me. I'll just encourage them not to tell me if they've met with another commissioner or my colleagues, that they not tell me what that discussion entailed and likewise they have disclosure of what they and myself have discussed to our commissioner and reserve that for a time like this. So, Mark, I didn't see you break out in hives or anything like that, so that may be a positive way to go about this, to be able to talk to our constituents and do so in a way that doesn't at least violate the intent of the Open Public Meetings Act. What do you think?
I think, I think that's, that's helpful, you're mindful of the, of the spirit and intent of the law. You have your correspondence practice where you introduce into the public record communications that have been sent to the board. I think that transparency in those communications which is vital. There's always the public comment period which is made available and that's another opportunity that should be brought to the attention of citizens or constituents who'd like to address the full board. That's a great opportunity to do that in a very open public way that sidesteps that issue or the appearance of there being potential violation or concern for violation of the OPM Act.
Yeah, I just think the, the art of this is to make sure that we don't understand what's in mind of a public commissioner in private in a setting other than an open public meeting, a special rape or maybe. So that's been my practice about it.
One of the things.
But I agree, it's probably best for staff not to set up those.
And one of the things we talked about is if they wanted to do that, is to just have a work session on their issue.
That's, that's certainly a way.
They could address all three of you in another public meeting.
That is, that is a really, really good way to do it, so.
I don't know.
Okay.
I'll be happy.
Okay. Okay, certainly calendar, resolution calling for a hearing on the proposed sale of surplus property. You have a list of items and we would propose to try an option block that Tom has put together. This will try to surplus chapter which has an option and the intent is that the ERD will primarily run an option, try to loosen, reduce the burden of the credit office that will be receiving money portion of proceeds from the, from the option. We also made this list available to cities of Forks, Plankton, Liston, Squam, in the net that they might want something that's on here at the salvage. It does look like Squam is at least looking at whether they'll purchase it. Final sale prices, I'm sure. Twenty dollar chains out.
Minimum.
That's in the low. There's probably a few.
Yep.
There's a couple of probably have.
Yeah.
For parts though. When's the, I just put it, I don't know, we have to.
Let's see, um.
Once we go through all the proprietary items and have public assetizing, first of the surplus then for the, when that's passed and for the auction, the whole date is October 6th and the time for 10 days after that.
October 6th through the 16th of May.
Okay. The hearing is set up for the 22nd, then it'll be after that, so. Questions, Karen? For being related to 20.
Thank you.
Request from Sheriff's Office to purchase and install security cameras. Good morning, how are you?
Good.
Thanks, sir. spend all day laboring. You should all have the synopsis that was provided and kind of a little bit of the history behind this project and request. It's mostly created as in compliance with the DOJ's recommendations for security cameras throughout the jail and throughout the perimeter. It's a recording system. There's a 60-day requirement in terms of maintaining the record, unless there's any bad we can go back and any draw up from that, you can carry it and record it to a CD and then beyond that can be recorded and viewed. So once we hit the 60-day mark, it begins to a little bit, just record rooms out of itself. Questions, comments?
This was an issue I would comment that, while you haven't seen it yet, we do actually have listed in the asks for next year, in next year's budget. It was something the sheriff talked to me about, about not wanting to wait and to try and get this done quickly. Explained they would take a budget emergency request because it doesn't look like he's got that much room in his budget right now. And it's a capital issue, both of which would require some form of, of public meeting. So the discussion for you, or the request to bring it to you was to, was to basically have the sheriff say why he needed it done quicker than wait for regular budget process.
Can I, I can answer that. I could certainly wait for the, the next budget year, but if, if there are surplus monies on the ground, it might certainly give a year longer on that. Any sheriff would tell you that the, that the biggest liability that he has is in jail. If you look around, um, the vulnerability that we have in our jail for allegations on staff, that's why I was figuring out what's going on afterwards to analyze, leave this way or spur these allegations. I think it's also best practice, the fact is jails are quite manpower intensive and where we, you know, another, another way to do this would be to put more corrections officer on the floor, the cost of like eighty, a hundred thousand each, including benefits per year. This is one-time money to keep us ahead of that.
Yeah. And Bill, I'm not sure that, I can't remember the timing of the prison rape elimination thing. I think that might predate Commissioner.
It does, it actually goes back to.
Commissioner Peach, you said.
Originally passed during the Bush years. And it was rather draconian at first, but it has since been, it has since been modified where it's not too bad. And we're in full compliance with it, however, we're in full compliance with the act, but we're not in full compliance with best practices. It would be putting calendars that record in all the common areas. And this, this may be the big thing to protect the staff from spurious allegations. Is what, you ever thought of two or three assaults a month in a jail?
That we're aware of.
That we're aware of. And they're, it's very difficult for us to find perpetrators when people go in and people slip on the floor and somebody, and they're mischievous. So I, I think this would make the jail a better place because it's less active, it's like the consultants, and if they are, we can use the calendar, schedule it to be good.
I hope my memory of what I recall isn't exactly correct, but I, I remember, Bill, that there's a private sector or nonprofit group that, that you've.
Oh, yeah, to adjust attention.
And I presume that this is part of that effort to.
Well.
Improve the.
Yeah, we signed up for a grant which we thought was, was going to make some funds available so that we could purchase cameras out of that. But most of the funding was to do a, a study in, in terms of best practices, you know, understanding that county cannot be very compliant or very careful.
Gee, that is a carrier of expertise policy.
Okay.
So that's what you, you know, it's getting for our policy as well. Okay, okay. The, the last question that I have is, are these videos, well, of course, they're subject to the Public Records Act, but are they exempt from disclosure? Because there's some.
Yes.
So we don't have to go to the effort of cataloging, indexing, so.
No, they, they.
Respond to public records.
They are exempt from public disclosure unless they're.
Because jail.
Unless there is an incident that is, you know, it goes to court.
So unless, until they become evidence in a specific case, then, okay.
I think there's a specific, Mark, a specific exemption for that. If we didn't have that exemption, it would be literally, you couldn't do it, you know.
It would, that would.
Because the courts have found that inmates do have a right to, to privacy, even, they have a global right to privacy in the common areas of the jail.
Well, I just, I didn't want this to be an opening for the huge amount of staff effort that it would take for body cameras for, for your deputies and stuff. That's a separate discussion.
Completely.
And then it's.
I would love, yeah, just parenthetically, I'd love.
It's a great name, but it's huge.
We can't afford the, we can't afford the, the staff time that's in town and the, essentially editing and, and.
Catalog and index. We have the whole issue of audio versus video as well. It's okay, well, what was the only?
By the way, this, this is going to be a video and there's going to be recording.
Okay. Okay. That's a whole nother set, like, like you said, a whole nother set of laws in our state.
It's a whole nother.
Videos.
So anyway, I would say, I, I would be, you know, if it's, if you want to exercise the mechanisms of the budget emergency, do it now, that we've had some, we've had some preliminary bids and I think you've got it in there with, thinking of someone in the neighborhood of 250, 300, we got a responsive bid from a local contractor, which I would always like to use, but of course, if you approve it, we're, what is it, 60 days?
That's right.
It'll actually be the. Go on, so realistically, I don't see any work being done till maybe December or even January.
So to get on the budget emergency for the, the last Tuesday of this month, you'd pretty much need to turn that into deputy day so she can get it to Trish by Wednesday, so it'll be announced next week.
We'll do it. I would, I would support that. I think this is a liability reducer, so we need to kind of get on with it.
Could you, Ron? I don't know that I was going to.
She is.
Sit right here.
I'll take your back document.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. Document is related to the recusal of Commissioner McIntyre, a pro temp commissioner for the purpose of building on the agreement that Phil scheduled.
So was Trish supposed to be back here for this?
Um, or.
Is there a sign in the papers, okay? Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Per the, per the agenda package, I wrote a letter to Department of Board as laid out in a particular section of the Palm County Code, that's 3.05.090 relating to the rules of the board. And it, you know, I lay out the logic. Good morning, Don.
Good morning.
Thanks for being here. You look way too, way too nice for this board. I burned all my ties when I got outside of Beltway. It's like you didn't.
So pants and vest are tight. It's still fit.
Better, you're doing better than me. Phil is a, a neighbor and friend of mine. I have no financial interest whatsoever in this, in this contract that is before us. But to avoid the appearance of a conflict of interest, I have determined that I need to recuse myself. And in so doing, according to the, the section of Palm County Code, we have the ability to nominate and appoint a pro temp commissioner. It was apparent from the discussion on the 31st that there would be a division should I step back and so that, so no action would be possible. This one commissioner was going to vote one way and another commissioner was going to vote the other way. And I have, let me pause for a minute. I am greatly remiss, I should have remembered at the outset of the meeting to say Commissioner Chapman is otherwise engaged on an appointment, so he couldn't be here today, so his absence is excused. Apologize for not remembering to say that at the very beginning of the meeting. That applies also for the regular meeting here at 10 o'clock. And I don't know for sure if he's going to be able to join us in the executive session.
I'm not sure either. We extended the invitation and explained to him how important we thought it was, but I have not heard whether he'll call in or not.
Again, I should have said that earlier, but that's, that's a reason for his absence this morning. So anyway, picking back up on this, there's a, there's a particular way that this appointment proceeds. Mr. Hall and myself both signed affidavits that we have not discussed the merits of this, which we have not. And so.
I believe he needs to be nominated for the position.
Correct. So the, the other factor is since we're going to, since the contract is on the regular business meeting agenda, this is not associated with the recusal necessarily, but it is associated since I will, with the fact that I'll be out of the rooms and having to recuse myself. Ordinarily, if the chair is unavailable to conduct the meeting, that responsibility devolves on the elected vice chair, who is absent today. So we will have to elect a, an acting vice chair to be totally correct in how we set up the, the organization of the board of commissioners. And that can take place, I believe, before Mr. Hall is sworn in. I don't think there's a legal bar to accomplishing that. So.
We just need a motion and a second.
So we can do that right now? I think Trish can, can.
Well, we need a motion and a second, I believe, to appoint Mr. Hall.
Right.
One of the people has to be you.
No, 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 we, we is talking about doing the vice chair, acting vice chair first.
I'm just trying to get the, the sequence of events.
I think either one could run either quarter because you're not accusing yourself from that vote. And Mr. Hall, if he is successful in being nominated to, to take over, it'll only be for item two E.
So just before that, I'll step out of the room when business is done. It'll just be for that, I'll step out of the room when business is done on that item, however it concludes itself, somebody will come get me and I'll come back to resume.
So you can do it in the other order.
Like as usual, so. So the other, I think it would be the cleanest, Trish, and help me if this is incorrect, I think it would be the cleanest if we were to conduct all of that business right now. So then, when we open the regular weekly business meeting at 10, we just, we have it all worked out, the sequence, who's gonna be doing what, all of the paperwork completed and signed, Mr. Hall's sworn in, all of that stuff, we just get done before the beginning of the business meeting, I think. So let's do that right now. Let's start first, if we can, the nomination and a vote for Mr. Hall to be the pro temp commissioner for item two E on regular business meeting, which concerns consulting, a personal services contract or consulting services, with Mr. Phil Kitchell requiring a force board trust. So I will move the nomination of Mr. Donald Hall, a registered voter and a resident of Commissioner District One, and who is additionally of the same party as myself. So he's a very good fit. He's a former, a former retired federal civil servant, as, as I was as well. He worked in the five-sided wind tunnel known as the Pentagon, which I did not work in, but I have been in many times, and I think he is, and he qualifies, so I would, I would propose to nominate Mr. Hall as pro temp commissioner for the Board of Commissioners. You know, second discussion. Now's the time to back out?
Yeah.
Thanks for, thanks for being willing.
I'm fine. Privileged to fill in, I believe this is a very important issue.
I see your prosecuting attorney approach.
I'm better than the prosecutor in every case.
So I'll just make sure that we've done this correctly.
I think procedurally, you're, I think negotiating the various hurdles just fine. My comment and suggestion would be that in the same way that you identified that there, there's a reason for which you're stepping back, there'd just be discussion and clarification if it will matter. I'm going to attach it to Mr. Hall.
If you, if, Don, if you would make a similar statement, if you're able to, that you have no conflict of interest or appearance of fairness issues, et cetera, regarding this.
Right, that's correct. I do not know the John Run, and I have no financial interest at all in this transaction.
Great, thanks, Morgan. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries? You're almost there. All you gotta do is sign and get notarized and get sworn in done, and you'll be good to go. And we can do that in the space between the two meetings, I think.
Do we want to do, do you want to be able to do this now?
We can, we can sign those, Trish, during the, during the time between the.
Okay.
Get done here at 10 o'clock, I think that would be fine. So secondly, we need a, a motion to, it's probably, probably, probably that I make the motion, that Commissioner Peach is elected acting vice chair of the Board for the purpose of conducting a discussion and action on this agenda of two E.
You know, it might be expedient just to make a motion, if I could offer a suggestion, just to make a motion anytime the, the current vice chair is not in attendance, that he would be the acting vice chair. So it'll cover, cover us in case the rest of the year, any kind of like comes up again.
Good idea.
And I, I've been thinking that maybe we should do that at the beginning of the year, always elect a chair or vice chair and a pro temp vice chair, just in case.
Good idea. I will, I will make a motion to be, for Commissioner Peach to be elected acting vice chair whenever we have an absence of the elected vice chair. Second, I confuse you?
Yeah, I got it.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries?
I need one other action from you, and that is the resolution appointing the pro temp commissioner.
Yeah, but thanks, Don.
Thanks, Roger.
We have the draft here, and this is according to, in accordance with the county code, I believe, we have to memorialize the appointment in a resolution, whereupon Mr. Hall then becomes official and he is eligible to take the oath of office. So, yeah, we'll adopt the resolution. Second, moving to second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries? I think we have successfully dotted the i's across the t's. Public Works Agreement for Purchase of Adsemen for Shirley Does Your Chin Trustee Activities Related to the Carl'sburg Zoo. Just said, why aren't you as a level talking about where this is? This is a show that the configuration meeting we're working with right now. We're talking about easement for this fourth name that would be on these first three properties. And this is the first of several that you will be seeing as, and the property is located exactly where. This is 101, this is Carl'sburg Road, three properties here. So it will also serve this property that is already developed. And so we're, would, would you figure out exactly where the property is there? It's right on the north edge of these three lots. Thank you. Okay. This is an agreement in exchange for one service connection. Whenever the property, one of the three lots develops, it will provide us with a 15-foot permanent easement and a 30-foot construction easement along the north edge of the three properties. But the other two would connect at the standard B's, that is, three parts. Yeah, the other, there are two parcels involved in this easement that would connect, or would, would connect with, and we haven't done it yet. And this will also provide this, the line that will also serve the fourth property to the, to the west of these three that we don't need an easement for, but to do each of those property, that property as well. Okay, great. Yep. Discussion, comments, questions? Two D for. As I said, you'll, you'll be seeing several more of these, sorry, my, these four. It'll be all of these all, as usual. So everyone, so these, you suppose those are your first questions?
Yes, all real, real property transactions, no matter how slight, have to come to the Commissioner's first statement. The transaction, any of the vulnerable rights, we decide to rent them, lease them, and take easements, buy, sell, any of the vulnerable rights of real property have to come to the Board, nobody can.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Joe, wherever Joe is.
Yeah, Joe did do all the work.
Just sort of. Nancy Estebb approached, this is good in the order, stuff here. Nancy approached me a little bit earlier, right before the meeting started, and said the League of Women Voters has a answer for us as to whether or not they would like to be a part of the, or a person representing the League, I should probably properly say, on the Trust Lands Advisory Committee that we're contemplating today.
Yes, I'm with the League of Women Voters. The final county chapter of the League of Women Voters is honored to have been considered by the Charter Review Committee and the Board of County Commissioners for membership on the new Trust Lands Advisory Committee. How I can inform decision. We need to know what the purpose of this committee will be, how often we'll meet, its length of anticipated service, and its planned end product. A letter with that information should be sent to our League President, Deborah Martin, at P O Box 1092, Carl'sburg, 98324. The League Board can then consider the matter to determine if we can play a useful role in enhancing the transparency and functioning of local government.
Great, thank you. Any else, do you have members of that committee in the audience today?
Yes.
Any wonder if any of those members had anything that they wanted to share? See, last night, I was handing the up. How are you?
Tired, gentlemen. So I, I drove in this morning, I'll stick around till about 10:30, but as you may have heard, there's nine people who think they're very important in the legal profession coming to court, so apparently I have to set up a courtroom for them, so they're gonna be stealing my sets and different things from borrowing them, borrowing, they'll get me with the sheriff, finally get at me. So my name is Rod Flack, I sit on the Charter Review Commission, I'm also the city's attorney, I sit on two Green Crow Board of Directors, I'm the commander of the Department of Sons and Union Vets, I'm the vice president for the Augustine Society, and if Mr. Doherty has anything else he wants me to disclose, I'll do so.
I came in this morning to deal with a couple of the issues that have risen.
I wonder if, obviously, a veteran's thing.
We won, you lost. And we, you know, wanna address just a few of those to try to answer some of those questions that came up. There was one that Commissioner Chapman questioned about the Charter Commission actually making recommendations to you all. It's in the Charter, it's one of the things the Charter Commission could do. In this case, the Charter Commission sent forward a recommendation, and then you guys asked for some questions. As I understand it, people have been serving in this kind of ad hoc way of trying to answer your questions, and that's the way I'm kind of attending the day. One of the issues that came up was the removal of political parties, and the, the suggestion came from a meeting on Friday before Commissioner's meeting on Monday, of how would a structure of Board be? Spent a lot of time looking my windshield, so windshield processing that, to say, you know, you wanna have as much input as you can across a spectrum as you can. You could have, as some suggested, a very small group that says financially, we should be doing X, Y, and Z with timber, but then you might miss ecological and or political aspects. And so the idea was understanding that there were political aspects, you have an advisory committee that would be formed, that would make a recommendation to three politicals, who would then have to make a dis, recommendation or effort to their voters or the legislature, and eventually, if that was to pass, if that was the decision being, and there was a two-pronged question that was being asked, actually, if the first prong was, yes, let's do this, and ignore the second part, then you'd have to get the governor to sign, so that's very much a political process, and having representatives from both political parties could be advantageous. But there was also a second prong, like if it's not in the county's best interest to pursue that, how could the county be more engaged in oversight of the DNR's activities, especially in light of the fact that the largest arrearage of the DNR's, of this DNR current arrearage sits in one Commissioner's district, arose in the last decade in that Commissioner's district, and is in my neighborhood. How could the county commissioners and the county be more engaged in those activities might, would be the second prong? So that was the, the reasoning behind that. It's nice to see the League of Women Voters echo kind of what I had suggested, which is why we drafted a draft letter to send to those groups, to give them a month to figure out whether or not they wanted to be participating. But the League of Women Voters many years ago was very engaged in a trust land trans, trust land advisory faction, they had done a couple of reports, and it was probably a decade ago, and that was the justification for including the League. I'm looking at the League, I should be addressing you, but that way they could understand, how did we get roped into this? So that was the justification. And the fact that a history student has a terrible habit of remembering those weird little details. Timing, someone asked, well, could this be done in four months? Well, it could, if you're paying everybody to quit their day jobs and only work on this, yeah, anything could happen. But really, there's a lot of information that has to be pulled together. Some of it involves very specific expertise from other agencies or individuals or organizations, and I'm not convinced they're gonna work on anybody's time schedule. You also have volunteers, and you have those things called the holidays, not that far away, right in the middle of that. And in some of the process, there was the recommendation memo that I helped draft that said, you know, be aware, there's some steps you've gotta go through, and those just take some time. And we had suggested a reasonable cost for whoever you guys could get to facilitate or staff, but to try to limit those demands on staff and or facilitator, therefore limiting the cost of the county on budget care was the rule in the objective. And, and so that was some of the process. You could get to a place where you sit down by, you know, if you were to go through the timeline, you'd get the group together, you give them a month to figure out who would like to respond and be participant, and then they meet in sometime in October, they lay out a calendar, probably once or twice a month, that well, this could be what volunteers probably offer. Then you could get to a point to like four meetings down the road, they might get to an issue where they look at the, you know, HCP and find out that really the HCP is such a document, giving the county its own lands, subject to all the rules of the HCP, maybe one where it's not financially in the best interest of the county at that point. You might, I don't know if that's the answer, that is a wild guess, but after 25 years of doing some of this work, my, my intuition is kicking in. And, and that might be a point where you can say, okay, well, here's, here's some practicalities, you know, this might be a decision tree point, and we come to this conclusion, my majority minority report, and here, here's where you're at, and then here's the next part of the, of the recommendation. So that was, that was some of that thought process in there. And also then you also have a way through study, debate, and formulate process on disparate, the tendency of disparaging, disparaging reviews or not, divergent reviews. Finally, I'd like to just say what this wasn't. It's been fascinating watching, thank you. I, I and a couple others are, are your viewers, and it wasn't just supposed to be a committee for all timber issues, that wasn't even talked about at the Charter Review Commission, as I recall. It wasn't supposed to be a committee to deal with everything dealing with DNR, the county's trust lands associated with DNR, that's currently in play, everything from the long, the long-term rural mineral strategy to sustainable harvest calculation to the arrearage. It wasn't, there wasn't really a discussion to include everything regarding the federal force in there. Those aren't held in trust by the state or by, by the federal government, some would argue they're not even worked on that often. It wasn't also supposed to be a thing on private timber lands, it wasn't really in the recommendation the two times it was voted on. It wasn't a discussion on climate change, it wasn't a discussion on recreational trails and hunting or, you know, ATV usage, nor was it some perceived privatization effort discussion either. That wasn't really talked about either, it was, you know, is there, that we had people testify that there were, you know, maybe the county should try to take these lands back, and there was actually a proposal by others to that in the committee, and a few of us said, you wanna really research this question because there's some ramifications and some difficulties and some assumptions you're making that may not be the case anymore. And when we said that, they were like, well, what do you mean? You know, and so we started talking, maybe we should study this more as a group and as a county. That's probably a fair question and a fair approach. So that, that's kind of what I came to try to add to the discussion, hopefully it's helpful, it hasn't caused more confusion.
No, that helps a lot, Rod. I, I was the one that suggested that maybe we ought not have a representative from both of the major political parties in the county, just my thinking at that point was it might serve to politicize the group and its discussions, which may or may not be helpful, but at your point, I think that one of the potential outcomes of this, of this effort might be a legislative program for the county. You know, that, that is, that's not necessarily the, the required. Now, that, that is, that's not necessarily the requirement, but it could be if the discussion of the committee kind of moves in that direction. And in that, and the case that you made, for the composition as was originally laid out, I think is, is a good, okay. So I, I think, from my aspect, and I'll say something again here in a second that I said before, is we probably ought to, ought to go with good enough right now. I think the, the documents that you've put on our table are certainly 90% of the way there, in my view. And we can certainly modify the, the structure of the committee, we can invite anybody that's listed there to rep, to send a representative if they choose not to. And, you know, that's their choice, but at least we will have a committee that's broad-based and represents potentially all possible points of view.
And I think that was, that was the intent.
That's, that's, that's really what the, what the prescription is.
And if the group decides, well, that's not something we want to participate in, then they've made their decision, and, and that's fine too. And not participating is, you know, that makes it, we don't have the staff, we don't have the volunteer, we don't have the, you know, the general interest, and that's a legitimate response as well.
Let me, I think we probably ought to bring this back to next week's business meeting. And certainly...
I'll just say, I won't be able to do that.
That's fine. That's, that's fine. I think your homework is saying that involuntary, as it may, as it may have been, has been discharged.
Okay.
I appreciate, I appreciate the work. Thank you, John. I think it's on the table now. I'm prepared to...
So you don't want to bring it back to work session, you want to bring it directly to committee?
Yeah, we can, we can do both. I just want all three of us.
And there's a couple of things. I, first, I'd like to suggest that we make available mileage to any other committee members.
That's a good point.
And I don't know what trouble that involves, but the other is, I've had feedback about the selection of an organization from an environmental community, and Jim, if you can brief us on the protocol, do the environmental, do the, the environmental representatives need to go out and follow a protocol to select someone that is the environmental representative? And the reason I ask that is it'll potentially increase the timeline for this, and what we're trying to finish up is virtual order. It may be the case we're better off to have a larger group of environmental organizations. We intensulate what I, I don't know what to go ahead of this.
The first step is obviously to get the committee set up and broadcast an invitation as to how the committee is structured. You know, they, they are, whoever they is, is responsible for whatever nominee that we then appoint. Anyway, I do think we need to win just along, so work session and regular agenda for next week, or at least regular agenda, probably work session.
Okay.
Let's do, let's do a little meeting. Okay. Thank you, Nancy, I appreciate that. And Jim, if you wouldn't mind, a email or formal letter to the person at the address that was mentioned by Nancy, conveying to that person all that we have on our table, the draft, charter, purpose of the committee, recommendation from the Charter Review Commission, et cetera, et cetera. And that'll, that'll be the best that we can do to answer the, answer the, as well. Also for next week, I've, I've gotten a communication from the treasurer saying that the Finance Committee that was originally scheduled for this Thursday, the 10th, has been taken off the books. That committee is, as we know, we, the board have asked to take a look at all of our finance policies, not simply just the ones that we have discussed, the particular ones that we discussed, but those as well, all the financial policies to bring forward, any recommendations that the Finance Committee has. So I don't know if it's just this meeting that is scheduled for this Thursday or future meetings. So next, next work session, we should probably have a discussion about how we want to proceed as board on whatever financial policies that are in need to change, how we should do it, when we should do that, what we should do, that kind of thing. I don't want to let this blank. Financial policies are critically important. The charter assigns the Board of Commissioners the task of creating certain financial policies, so we need to step into that.
And I had a chance to attend the last meeting, and I saw a conversation I'd like to add, is whether I can attend the next meeting. That then creates the situation where we have to, to notice, to notice. But I agree, my concern is making sure that we're getting support to the staff in that department.
Okay. Anything else, good of the order was? We will, a couple, two minutes, we will adjourn this week's meeting.
Decision.
For purposes of participation in the decision.
Regarding the contract with Philip Pichol.
Regarding the contract with Philip Pichol.
And also...
This is the best amount of... Congratulations, Commissioner. Thank you. Well done.